Okay, if we can do a roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. All right, so we don't have any takers for public comment tonight, so we'll move right on into our discussion items. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I apologize. We do have board comment, too.
I'm going to be very quick. So, I was not able to be at the board meeting two weeks ago when we had our annual achievement and accountability report due to an illness. And, you know, it was an extremely important meeting and obviously represents a critical role as board to hold ourselves in the district accountable for monitoring progress toward academic goals. So, I did watch the video, read all the coverage from the roundtable and such, and I just wanted to add a few brief comments to those of my colleagues, both on the substance of the information that was discussed, as well as the function of the report. And I'll do that very quickly. First and foremost, content of the report. I wanted just to underline three of the trends that were most striking to me, and I believe most crucial for our focused attention going forward. First, as was talked about kindergarten readiness based on the Icel assessment, specifically that our black students have gone from 41% deemed kindergarten ready on that scope of literacy skills areas in 2015 to 27.6% this fall. I know Stacy spoke to our work in this area during the meeting. I would like to specifically call for a discussion in conjunction with Cradle to Career to -- for us to collectively own this trend and to better understand root causes and what immediate actions we can take to correct the trend. As we know, this is not the only measure we are looking at to identify whether children are ready, but it is the best leading indicator we have today in terms of what we are going to be looking at going forward and what we have to address as educators across the district. So, it's critically important to reverse this three-year downward trend. The second was growth for students in the lowest quartile, which again was discussed. It's wholly insufficient for K through three for us to enable us to get to proficiency on literacy. And that's regardless, I think, of the guideposts we would have. And then lastly, performance of our students with special needs. When we look at the district relative to the state, our students across the state are significantly, at the state level, are outperforming the students in both, in our district in both reading and math on the dynamic learning assessment. Now, I know this represents a small portion of students with IEPs in our district, but this combined with our flat or worsening performance in the lowest quartile, which includes over 50% of our students with IEPs, is a clarion call for action. So, based on these trends, I think we need to take, as others said, a deep, hard look at our approach, our structure of resource allocation, and our execution of interventions in literacy and our special services for our students as key priorities. We're in year three of our five-year strategic plan, and having been part of that plan, it was very comprehensive approach to the work that we have and done and are have going forward. And my, I'm thinking that we need to call on us, we need to work with our administrators as the spring performance data comes available, so that we might potentially refocus the work of the remaining years of that plan, rationalize and prioritize, just because we have some, I think we have some clear choices in what we need to do next to impact and reverse the trends that we see. And then to the question that Kylie aptly raised at the meeting about the goal of the report, I'm going to have an oversimplification here, Kylie, but being in my sixth, going on seventh year, I believe the primary function of that report is to tell us at a very macro level, are we getting the academic results we want for our children? And I think the answer at this point is, no, we're not, and we need to continue to work on that. From there, it's incumbent on management to unpack the results clearly with recommendations from us and on suggestions on where to go with that analysis, but to provide that actionable data to refine, revise, retool, and refocus what we're doing, double down on some things, cut other initiatives as necessary. So, I really see the work throughout the year being that work of the board as we look at individual initiatives and programs and success metrics for those. So, I just wanted to offer my responses to the question and thank the team for the data. And, you know, I think we're all in, we just, we have to really make some hard choices as we go forward, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will move on into our discussion items. I will note that our, one of our discussion items, a community schools update, I see that our team has given the lateness of the hour, we've decided to move that to a March board meeting to discuss. So, we will start off with sponsorship and distributing materials in schools. We just started talking a little bit about this last week at our policy committee meeting, but wanted to bring it to this meeting for a discussion, because this is a, it represents a shift in a policy in terms of accepting sponsorships and potentially accepting advertising. It's something that we decided needed a little broader public discussion, so with that, Raphael, do you want to?
So, I indicated during the policy meeting last week, the administration had been thinking about the possibility of allowing organizations to provide sponsorship for the district. And the reason being, it's a way to supplement our revenue inflow. The amount of money that we get is somewhat limited, basically to mostly property taxes and some funding from the federal government, as well as some, some money from the state. So, this would be a way to be able to do some of the things that are tricky financially to do now, but we should be able to do. And to point out, the neighboring high school district 202, they have a similar policy that allows sponsorship and limited form of advertising on school properties as a way to augment revenue. And so, it's a neighboring district in Willmet 39, they have something similar. And far afield a little bit, Arlington High 25 has something similar. So, if you look at the guideline that I presented before the board, there's field safe, things that we have in there, there's certain things that'll be limited from, from being advertised, things such as political messages, things that are divisive or racist in nature, but we just thought it'd be something for the board to consider as an adjustment to our policy.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I like the creativity. Can you give an example of how this might be used in another district right now, like something that has been sponsored and what that looks like?
You know, for example, in 202, there are banners put up in the gym that are sponsored by Northwestern. And I also know that the football field at ETHS, there are banners put up that are paid for by sponsors, too. And those funds are used to augment some of the expenditures that the district have.
So, we might engage in a sponsorship conversation with a place like Northwestern University to put a Northwestern logo on, say, middle school basketball jerseys, that kind of thing? Or a banner in the gym?
I was thinking more like--
I've seen at Nichols or Haven, there's a sign that says, "NU Supports," like Evanston Sports.
Things like that. And I know--
Three years past, but--
I know, we were talking to a group about two years ago, what they do, they have pop-up soccer field that they put up. They put up a soccer field with signs on our, on our field, which will allow our students to be able to play soccer during our recess on our field. Now, the cost of putting that up is about $70,000 a year. But what the, the firm proposed to us is they talk to organizations such as North Shore Health Services, and I think Wind Trust Bank, and a few other entities that are willing to put up banners and help to defray the cost of putting up such a, such a pop-up soccer field that will allow us to have our children play soccer. Currently, we have no way to, to sponsor something like that out of district funds. That's an example of something that we'll be able to do. Another thing is, we have some, some of our basketball fields, an example would be shoot Middle School that needs to be resurfaced. In the scheme of the amount of money that we have to spend on capital, we focus on health and safety of our children above things like resurfacing basketball court. This will allow us to be able to, to get a sponsorship agreement that will allow us to be able to do those kinds of things.
And we built in, in this process, two controls. One is that as an administration, we would review for what might be pertinent in an elementary and middle school environment, and then we would bring that forward to the board, so--
One by one?
Yes. We'll also have the district law firm, the district attorney vet it to make sure it complies with whatever guideline the board sets up, and then it comes to further board for discussion and approval in an open board meeting. So, it's not something that can be done orally or just a decision that could be made just by the administration. It has to be vetted and talked about by the board.
I just wanted to, again, reiterate some of the robust conversation we had when this was presented during the policy committee meeting, and then something that my, our colleague Lindsay, who happens to leave, because she's a little under the weather, but she wanted to make a point, is that, again, we really want to make sure that, you know, when we approach sponsorships, that these companies that approach us actually share the values of Evanston, right? So, for instance, we don't want to deal with companies that are anti-LGBTQ like Chick-fil-A or, you know, again, any type of company that, you know, does not match or equal or has the same values as Evanston, it's just not somebody that we want to deal with as a district or that we would like to expose our children or families to. So, just wanted to reiterate that we had a very robust discussion about that and making sure that, and also making sure that the community really knows, again, as we, as we discuss this as a board, if we approve this approach, you know, that the community is well informed about this, that that way they don't feel that they're, okay, well, this is dropping out of nowhere, why do we have this sponsorship by McDonald's, you know, when was the community consulted? So, just making sure that we, as a body, ensure that we, that the community is well-informed about whatever decisions we make around these sponsorships.
I'm just wondering, wanted to make sure this wouldn't preclude individual schools, since you mentioned Haven, you know, the, the football team at an elementary school or whatever that gets sponsors for their jerseys, that we aren't precluding schools that are already doing that to defray costs for some of their, either PTA-sponsored or, I don't know how they do it, but it happens, that this wouldn't mean that that couldn't continue?
I wouldn't anticipate that should impact that, but I think it really boils down to the guideline that the boards approve. If it's the board's pleasure to make sure that pre-existing sponsorship stays as they are, then we'll just expand that. We will safeguard the ones that we have already and just expand it and provide opportunity for additional sponsorship to be available in the district.
So, does that, so I would want that to be the case, but also that we're not, not stopping them from getting new sponsors for those--
No, no, no.
For those specific programs. This doesn't mean--
Those are pursued by the PTA, that wouldn't be governed by this in any case, right?
Yeah, I don't know, it's always the PTA. But if--
But if a, if a school community that has greater access to companies and people that
might be in a position to sponsor activities, it would be important to me that when somebody comes to the district with an interest in sponsoring something, who's targeting a school community because there might be a relationship there, that the school district is balancing the interests of the entire DSA, like, you know--
Right.
Who else can we bring into that sponsorship deal to make sure that we're getting things in other places as well?
Right.
So, it's not just--
Right. The whole goal of bringing this topic forward is just a way to augment the resources that we have to serve students. It's not a way to shortchange what is already in place by the PTA, because we've been approached by different organizations who are willing to provide sponsorship for us. The current policy precludes us from doing that. What this will allow us to do is do things that are tasteful, that confirms to the values that the district has, and it's a way to pay for things that are narrowly, our children would not be able to experience or to be able to do. That's really the core reason why we're doing this.
And we surely wouldn't want to prevent the good work of the PTAs or parent groups across our different schools, so that's one piece. On the other side, Sergio's point is really well taken, that we want to make sure that as, as those groups reach out, that the, the groups that are sponsoring reflect our broader values. And we assume that, and so now, in some ways, we'd have to be a bit more explicit and offer some guidance and some process without absolutely trying to micromanage it, but to, just to be able to be, be open about what we, what we as a district are about.
And I think this is where, in opportunity work, and we can use our equity impact assessment tool to analyze, you know, whatever proposals come up to the board, right? So, I really think that would be, you know, a fine opportunity to utilize that assessment or the impact assessment tool that we have around that equity here for the district.
Do you rate on how much annually the high school gets for this type of stuff?
I do not. I can, I can find out, but just from conversation with my counterpart, I was told it was substantial. I don't know what that, what that amounts to at real doubt.
So, I, I think what is challenging to me in this conversation, which I echo being concerned about making sure any sponsorship represents, represents our values well, is when we use terms that are quite subjective, like tasteful. I think we need something more objective to discern what we think is appropriate or not. I personally, we don't consume a lot of media in our household, and I'm personally insensitive about what my children are exposed to, because children are not terribly discerning when it comes to advertisement and relationships with marketing. And I, if there are other families like ourselves in our community, they may have a reaction to seeing, you know, advertisement popping up in places where their children spend a lot of time. And so, I think that it's important that we have a discussion in a public way, but we also need to have it in a way that allows us to apply some objective measures to what sponsorships we would approve or not approve and why. And I think there are some things that we, you know, would seem relatively common in terms of what would not be considered appropriate for a school setting, and maybe some things that are relatively common in terms of what we would deem as appropriate, but I think that we would need to be specific about that. We can't just leave it up to, you know, the goodwill of the board and what's tasteful. I want to be more specific than that.
I agree, I agree with that. And I think that's where the guideline that we developed asked to be such that it will filter out a lot of things that most people will find objectionable. And the goal is, the goal here is not to turn, if you look at the, the sample guideline that we developed, it shows that there's certain things that we just wouldn't touch. We don't want to advertise directly to children. We don't, we don't plan to advertise to, to children through their computer. We don't want to subject them to advertising that looks like instruction. What we want to do, really, the focus is more sponsorship, where we get something in-kind or cash related to sponsorship of things that we need as opposed to blatant advertising. And we can, we can specify that with the guideline that we developed to address those issues.
So, the example that I used last week, I mean, we could advert, or take a sponsorship from someone that we think is an acceptable sponsor, right? But if it was a financial institution that later was engaged in predatory lending, then that trusting relationship may have been established simply by children having seen that institution sponsoring things in their community at their school. And how are we, like, are we going to ask those questions? What questions do we ask and what don't we? What kind of information do we get and don't we get in order to apply the guidelines?
I'll be honest in saying, there's no way to look forward and see what is going to happen in the future. What we can do, we can go based on past performance of these, of these entities. They are, they are firms that are, most people consider blue chip firm, who have, over the years, have developed a reputation for being upfront, for being honest in the way they do their business.
In 2008, we learned a lot about financial institutions that probably would have been considered blue chip, that really should have been no chip.
I agree with you. I agree with you, but there's, but I, I'll be, I'll be frank in saying, there's no way to get it 100%, right? But what we can do, if we do our due diligence, for the most part, we'll probably be close to 90%. And I think if we do that, I think we'll be, we'll be pretty good. It's like a lot of things, if we're trying to be, perfection could not be the enemy of, of, of good, so--
I appreciate the message, which is, let's set very clear, objective criteria. Let's apply those criteria. Let's use our controls, both at administrative level and at the board level, to have an open dialogue. And then we might want to also consider something in the agreement with whomever is the sponsor that has some sort of out clause as well. And we can work with our lawyers on that, so that we can build another control to, to protect the integrity of the district that we care about.
Have an morality clause, which most, most organizations do anyway, you have a morality clause.
And I just want to clarify, too. So, the way this is written, we're only talking about sponsorships for things that are in, like, outside, like in an athletic field, a play field, not in, like, in a cafeteria or in a, inside a gym. I think that makes it, I mean, I still agree that we need to have those clear guidelines, but I am more comfortable with some of these things being outside than I would be with any, anything inside the school. But other, I mean, I think it's, you know, obviously, as the discussion we had earlier points, we, we do have very limited capital funds, so if this can be a creative way that we can get an update to a basketball court, a playground, you know, whatever, I think it's, I, I like the thinking behind that, for sure.
And I know there have been some, some school district where a firm like IBM will have the employees work every Saturday for a month to, to build a playground, for example, new playground equipment, all that. And in return, what they would do, in this case, would be in-kind, they would put a plaque at the playground, brought to you with the support of IBM. And that's something that we may not have been able to afford to do, but our children benefits from. So, those are some of the examples that we have in mind when we're thinking about this, to provide our kids with the opportunity to have some of the stuff they deserve, but which we cannot right now afford to give them.
I have a question about the agreement with the marketing agent. Does that mean that if we change this policy that we will search out a marketing agent to look for sponsorship opportunities? I'm just curious why, why that's in there and why we wouldn't just exclude that and leave it open to whoever approaches us for sponsorship? This makes it sound like we would consider a marketing agent to search out sponsorships.
The reason why we put that in there is just flexibility, because most of us, we don't have specialty in marketing and sponsorship. We have day jobs, if you will. So, what we can do is, it's a way to, to magnify the abilities of the things that we can get sponsorship for. So, if we get a marketing agent, for example, to represent us, all the same rules that we apply to a sponsor, we apply to, will let the marketing agent know the kinds of things that we, we will or would not agree to. So, what he does is just expands the opportunities out there, but he doesn't give the marketing agent the exclusive right to talk for us without us having a say-so in what is approved or what not to approve. So, it's a way to magnify our ability to reach--
No, I, I understand that, but my question is, would we search out a marketing agent if we decide to change it? Like, if we decide to, to take this on and then we would look for a market, are we looking for a marketing agent or that's just--
It's a possibility.
Possibility.
It's a possibility. And there are firms out there actually who sold businesses to do things like this, because a lot of school, a lot of school--
Of course.
Right. They get a commission from the sponsor. A lot of schools and school districts are doing this now, and it's led to a creation of a business opportunity for a marketing agent. They know that your typical school district, they don't have anyone on staff who can search out and try to reach this agreement. So, they go out, they try to find the sponsorship, they take a cut from the sponsor. So, that's, it's just an option that we can add, to be able to magnify this.
Okay. I just, I think I would be careful. I think that we have a lot of great partners locally that we wouldn't need a marketing agent, and the way that this reads, it seems like it'd be something that would be outside of our purview and you, you would manage that. And so, we could get people sponsoring opportunities from who knows where, you know? Like, I like the idea of North Shore, like Northwestern and things that are local that probably could, are already maybe thinking about it and, and can't because of this limitation, but thinking about having somebody in addition to, to do that as, as a daytime job, because we don't have the capacity to do that, is, is a little bit concerning to me.
But I think even if we had a marketing agent, the sponsorships would still have to go through--
Yes.
--superintendent and then to board for approval. So, I think that's, that safeguard is still there. I mean, I agree with you, and I, I think from what we talked about last week, there's no immediate plan--
No.
--to do that. It's just a in case--
Right, it's just an option.
But it's still, all the other safeguards still remain in place in terms of requiring approval from the full board.
And that wouldn't be an exclusive arrangement if we did, if we did land it, I mean--
Whatever we're going to--
Right, right.
It's whatever we're going to.
That's where I was at.
I'm saying, like, long-term, it could evolve into something else, right? Where we're bringing outside sponsorships that, like, we, if we open up this door, we don't know what it will look like in 10, 15 years in terms of sponsorship to where, you know, like, every, every single one of our fields is, is named for something and it might not, you know, it might, it might just evolve into something that we don't, we, we won't be able to manage long-term.
But I would hope the community through the board will be able to, to exercise restraint on that, because I think a marketing agent only can represent what we want them to do.
The best interest of the district.
Right. But then, too, I think that we have a, a very active community in PTAs and local, local foundations that already do some of that work. And so, for example, at Rotary, we have a staff society and we have Rotary International. And so, as a staff society, we can't ask for, for sponsorships that Rotary International has already asked for. So, then, that does limit what we can ask for as staff in terms, in terms of sponsorship. So, that's something just to, to be aware of in terms of what, what type of relationship will that then affect PTAs and already existing entities that are, that are doing some of that work for us.
Right. We'll be conscious of that. The, what really brought this about is that we get approached by different firms that we don't work with right now, who would like to have a sponsorship relationship with them. And what we currently tell them is, sorry, we can't even consider it, because our policy precludes us from doing that. So, I, so we have to keep that in mind. We don't want to cannibalize, if you will, any existing relationship with a PTA that's taken time to develop, but at the same time, we are, we want to have the, the option, if you will--
Yeah.
--to develop relationship with an entity where there is no relationship right now, but provides us the opportunity to be able to get one developed.
Okay. I, I wanted to reiterate Sergio's mention of the equity impact assessment tool, just because a couple of things that we've discussed are elements of that tool, such as considering unintended consequences or considering stakeholder voice that may be a part of how we can evaluate these options, such as, you know, talking to PTA council before bringing a suggestion to us to make sure there isn't an already existing relationship that's going to be threatened. And also, including that kind of projection in unintended, avoiding unintended consequences. You know, stakeholders have already been consulted, we're aware that there is not an existing relationship, or if there is, we're working through different means or whatever. So, I'm wondering if that can be added, too.
By all means, by all means. If the board were to approve this, what we'll do, we'll then talk to the attorney, the district attorney, and we'll ask him to look at existing districts that have something like this and use the best of it, if you will, and draft something that we'll bring before the board for vetting. That'll be, that'll be the next step before we would do anything else.
Okay. And that moral-- Okay, and that moral out clause thing that you're talking about, that would be important to me.
Yeah, morality.
Be part of whatever contract.
Yeah.
Looking out that just to bring.
So the next step on this then is, is this going to be brought back at the next board meeting for approval? Or is there gonna...
We, we, we need attorneys, uh, review, so.
Yes.
Potentially, yes.
Um, and so, you know, taking into account the desire for some specificity around, um, you know, making sure that we're clear on what we will and won't accept. And in, including the concept of using the Equity Impact Assessment Tool. And just that, I, which I feel like if we incorporate that, that will incorporate the idea of, like, making sure that we are, you know, keeping in mind our community's values, um, as we do that. So I think you'll just let us know when we can, or when we see it next is when we'll be asked to.
And I hear, I think we hear loud and clear tread carefully. And, and again, that's where the, the controls that we have will be totally transparent and open for processing.
All right, thank you. All right, our next discussion items, uh, the Strategic Plan Quarter Two Progress Report and the Indicators Strategic Interscater Scorecard. So Paul, do you want to?
Yeah, I appreciate, um, Suni combining the two, because I think it's important. Let me take just a moment to recognize the comments that Candace just made and, and, uh, that all the board members made as we looked at the Achievement and Accountability Report. And when we think about presenting those data publicly and these data publicly, both progress on the strategic plan and the scorecard, it's our effort to look at our practices, to assess where we are and to make the types of, um, regular improvements, uh, as we move forward. The suggestion that Candace has, uh, provided, and again, was echoed in our, um, other board meeting a couple of weeks ago, about what does this, what do the data that we have mean in terms of our own practices or something that my team around the table are taking very seriously as we think about, um, how we think about our focus for next year, um, in the, in the years to come? And so, um, I just, I appreciate, um, the willingness to dive into these sorts of data that are a reflection or a mirror on our practices in the spirit of continuous improvement, in the spirit of trying to move forward. Uh, what, what I thought we would do is do a quick spin around the table for a couple of highlights, assuming that you've read all the, the, um, pieces here from each of the players, just a couple. And we'll leave it open for, uh, any source of questions on either of the documents that you might have. So Safe and Supportive Climate, uh, turn to Joyce if I can. We need a microphone near you. Gloria?
Oopsie. So, um, in all the areas, uh, Safe Supportive at School Climate, I think, um, probably the one I want to highlight is the work that has been going on um, at Haven, Nichols, Chute, and King Arts, where we have been developing, um, circles, both, uh, sharing circles, but also responsive circles to respond to issues that students may have within the classroom or with, um, uh, their teachers, as well as some restorative conferencing that we've been doing with students and families. Um, we've been feeling really good about the work that we've done there. I know that our, uh, facilitators are extremely busy and feel that this has been an effective, uh, tool for us to use. You know, I think that the other thing I want to highlight is that we worked in, you know, when Biz and I gave a presentation in May last year, it was May or June, we talked about how we were reviewing all the school climate teams and their work from the previous year. We had surveyed, um, staff that were on the school climate teams and they largely were supportive of our work, described it as, uh, positive experiences. I think that what we really learned is that every school has its own baseline. So as a result, we have been doing training this year. Biz, um, has really been specific about dividing schools into cohorts in terms of where their needs are, in terms of relationship and safety, where that extra training needs to occur. And then for some schools, they've gone and been using the school climate team model, uh, with our CRP work. So, um, we feel that that's pretty successful. Actually, she and I are going out to about half a dozen schools tomorrow to check in with them, with principals, to see where they're at in terms of their school climate goals this year.
Excellent. So why don't we move to High Quality Teaching and Learning? And Stacy probably has a few highlights and Latasha may have a highlight or two as well.
All right. So High Quality Teaching and Learning, when I really took a look at the bullets that we profiled from this last window of time, was largely focused around the provision of professional learning and the building of educator capacity. Within the memo on the bullets, you can see that we've been working and providing learning in the areas of using data to inform instruction, cultural responsive pedagogy, the use of the MTSS tool and MTSS tool and intervention plan development, and really defining the professional learning focus and diving into assessment work in the early childhood space. Um, the educators impacted by the work include, have included district leaders as well as all of our District Sixty-Five educate, deck educators and paraprofessionals and meeting teachers, meeting educators within their position needs, instructional coaches, teachers, psychologists, special educators. So, um, the focus of really what was here is the provision of that professional learning. And this connects to an ongoing series of learning, which we wrap up in March with our district half days, but still continue with our coaching focuses and some of the work we do in the after-school PLC spaces.
I'd like to just highlight, um, some of the work that's happening at the three focus schools, Dawes, Oakden, and Kingsley, in response to the, um, middle-of-the-year data review. So we've done some, or had some conversations in particular around those results and then gearing principals up for some, uh, specific conversations with teachers that are also receiving coaching and support, um, to be responsive to what the data reveals. So, um, really trying to leverage the, uh, resources of, um, instructional technology, curricular supports, to really make sure that they're able to differentiate instruction as I described before in May. That particular skill, um, done with real, in real-time data and triangulated from classroom formative data is really helpful for trying to pinpoint whatever misconceptions students might be struggling with. And so helping principals have those conversations from an instructional leader standpoint to, uh, promote some instructional practice changes from teachers is the direction that we've been going in. And thus far, um, I definitely say that two out of the three principals have really been trying to push their practice in terms of digging into some of the work alongside of their teachers while they're trying to figure some of the challenges out, so.
Anything to thrive in workforce and a couple of comments from Beatrice and from Mondele.
I have, um, two things I'd like to highlight. The first one is, um, it's the fourth bullet point, which is our Ask HR ticket system. So one of the things that we know is that, um, in the past, if you had to send an email to HR, it was sometimes confusing as to which HR member you needed to send it to, if it was benefits related or leaves related. So we simplified the system and we're using something that our tech department has been using for a long time, which is, um, in the beginning of November, we launched something called Ask HR, which now employees can just submit a ticket and we can look and decide who should be responding to it. So I feel like it's been able to increase our, or decrease the amount of time it takes to respond. So in the first three months, we've had about two hundred and thirty-five tickets so far. Um, and embedded in the, um, uh, the closed ticket, there is a space where they can select a link if they want to, um, give feedback, just two quick survey questions about the service that they've received. So I think that's, it's just exciting that, you know, we are really trying to work with our employees to make sure that they're getting a quick response and that they're getting it, um, you know, in a timely fashion as well. And then the second thing I just wanted to highlight was the lead paraprofessional role, which is something we've been working on with the union for some time. This is really an opportunity to provide our paraprofessionals with some mentoring and coaching that's done through a leadership role within their own bargaining unit. Um, and that's something that we're hoping to identify the lead parapros by the end of this month. Uh, there would be five in all that would support, um, the different schools that we have. So those are the two that I wanted to highlight.
So this year, we were able to lift, um, a couple of new professional learning opportunities for principals. One of them principally has been really what we call Problems of Practice Series. And so principals have been working in smaller feeder pattern groups where they're able to really reflect on, um, designing a problem of practice within their school and thinking about what are the lessons learned, what are the dilemmas that they're presented with? And then working with their colleagues collaboratively to go through a consultancy protocol. And so that's a change from prior experiences for the principals. We really got feedback from principals that the need for, to go deeper into the work, into the prominent problems that they face in their schools. And this was one of the work, collaborative works that I developed with, um, Latasha and thinking about the way in which we can accelerate principal executive, um, thinking around their problems in their schools. And it's gotten support also from curriculum instruction and from Joyce and, um, from other members of the cabinet who've attended and contributed to the, the learning. Um, that also, in addition, we have, uh, through support from Dr. Goran, we were able to lift a learning series with, um, some local but world-renowned professors at Northwestern University. Dr. James Malon and Dr. Cynthia Coburn have led our principals through three. Um, actually, our third one is coming up, three sessions. Um, and it's really an opportunity to both, in a way, celebrate our principals, give them, uh, an evening to, to kind of be together and learn together from really some, uh, top-notch learning, um, individuals who focus on distributive leadership and also in terms of human resource management, how do we really leverage the supports of the people in our schools um, to really get to our goals? And really, we connected it with our equity mandate, so in thinking about that distributive leadership is not separate from equity, that they're integrated. And so that this is a shared goal. And then the last thing I would just share is that we've lifted for the first time in our district a comprehensive coaching pilot plan this year. Um, really giving our principals one-on-one coaching opportunities to work with an executive leadership coach. Um, this is a pilot year for us, but we got most people signed up. So there was a lot of interest in the coaching model and to be able to learn and to strengthen their own individual experiences.
On family and community engagement, I'll, uh, what can I do, so let me, uh, cover some of that. And this also includes our deep commitment to equity. Um, really exciting to, uh, announce that the Parent Welcome Center is, at least this has had a soft opening. We will have a grand opening sometime in March. Cut a ribbon, celebrate the, uh, the space. But the space is now open. Our colleagues are using this for meetings and we just started classes today. And so we've got a GED class, there's a knitting class coming up. There's some language classes that are going to be happening. I mean, we're really excited about the, um, the dedicated space to work with the family members and community members, um, here, um, at JEH and, uh, I look forward to continued success. And again, we'll have a more formal grand opening sometime, the date keeps shifting a bit, but sometime in March, I believe. Um, and then on the, the equity side, one of the highlights in the report here is that we have activated the district Equity Leadership Team. Um, and it has been doing its work to review several things as we move forward. The discipline policy was one, um, that we reflected on in our last meeting with great input from, uh, the players on the team. And, um, we're working on protocols for what happens when discriminatory language, racial, racial slurs occur at schools that we can share with our teacher colleagues, educator colleagues, our school-based colleagues. And again, uh, the members of Delt took a really good time to review that and give some good feedback. And they're staged to do a series of reviews over the next couple of months as well. Financial sustainability?
Yeah, two key areas I would like to point to. We talked about one aspect of it earlier today, the security and transit. As you know, uh, two of them, orange and a yellow, we've already, the, uh, the rendering has been designed and the bid has been sent out and submitted and we are pricing on that. The last one is Lincolnwood, which, uh, we're getting ready to send out the bid for that on the twenty-second of February. We're still in the process of going back and engaging with the PTA as well as the, the school community to let them know about the latest design. I'm hopeful that they will agree with what, uh, what was designed. Uh, the last thing I want to point out is investments. We've been fortunate in that interest rates have been going up and we've actually pigged back on that and we've been able to get better yields from our investments than, than previously. And we've also been very focused in trying to make sure that we're doing those yields, try to get as much, uh, from it as possible. We've been aggressive in negotiating with financial institution. And whenever possible, we've, uh, we've tried to make sure that, uh, they bend to our will to increase what we get back for the money that, that we've invested. So we, that's part of the reason why, if you look at the presentation that Kathy just gave, we had a higher rate of return on our investment, which increased the, the amount of revenue that we have. We are hopeful that if we keep up this practice of being focused on, on getting, uh, good yield on the, uh, the cash on hand, it will help us to, to evolve better the rest of this fiscal year.
So that's a broad brush, um, on the strategic plan update. And, and we have a lot more work to do and we know that. And we stay the course as we move forward, uh, through the rest of the year.
Any questions?
I have one question.
Sure.
Um, this is for Stacy. So is branching minds the MTSS tool or is that a...
Branching minds is the tool. We moved to it, we adopted a new tool for designing, housing, and tracking our student interventions this year and it is branching minds, that's its brand name. And so teachers have looked, been learning how to, administrators and teachers have been learning how to use that tool beginning in early August and have been developing plans for students below the twenty-fifth percentile.
And when we, when we talk about the interventions, like tier two and three interventions that our reading specialists do?
Yes.
Are those, do those by definition have, um, plans? Are those, okay.
Reading specialists also do, they put play, their plans into branching minds as well and that is the expectation that any interventions that be having place for students in the bottom twenty-fifth percentile will be in the branching minds tool because it creates a history that also allows, is very helpful for us to kind of assess what's been working and what has not as a pattern around an intervention, but also according to the students. And so we did just move into this tool this year. We had a different tool that we used the previous two years that didn't prove to be very user-friendly. And so our hope is that with the ease of use with this tool and kind of a richer library of interventions, that you will really have found the right tool that will allow us to get that history to better help kids and to better assist.
And, um, is it possible that, do reading specialists work with kids that may not, it would not be in the twenty-fifth percentile? So there could be students that are getting those, getting interventions that don't, that aren't in the twenty-fifth percentile below? Or is...
The, uh, where we are right now, we're focused on the students that are in the twenty-fifth, the bottom twenty-fifth percentile. As people get more fluid with the tool, we would want to use the tool to track any interventions that we have in place. But we want to start with our greatest priorities right now, which is in that space. And as people get used to the tool and really kind of see, begin to see more of the value in the tool, that will expand to any students that are receiving an intervention beyond the tier one classroom space.
So the question being, there are kids who receive intervention that are not necessarily in the twenty...
There are some, but not, there are some, but not many. And there are some that are still, that are receiving interventions that are yet to get a plan in branching minds because we've been leaving some space for the learning curve. So for educators, we said, you know what, we want quality plans before quantity plans. So coming into the first round of conferences, we said, take a look and if you have more than four kids in the bottom quartile, make sure that you have a minimum, it's either three or four, make sure that you have at least three high-quality plans. And then coming around to the second round of conferences this, this week, um, the idea was to get plans in place for any remaining kids in the bottom quartile and we'll continue to monitor use and get to the point where when kids have an intervention, that, that plan is in branching minds.
This kind of relates to the next, on those indicators. So I think it's great to add indicators to that because it's clearly a gating factor to over there. But that data says we're like at thirty, I mean, it depends on thirty percent or of the kids in the bottom quartile have, currently having a plan? Does that, if, does... Does that, if, does, if over half of the kids in the bottom quartile are IEP students, is that the balance of the kids that are not students with IEPs?
The, so.
The number seems low.
Yeah, the number, the number is low. The highest number we got to in the other tool was closer to like 60 to 65%.
Okay.
Keep in mind, we, you know, in order to, again, get to quality as opposed to quantity, it doesn't mean that that's the, that's the, those are the only students that are receiving interventions. But we wanted people to be not worried about just getting the plans in. We wanted them to write good plans that were going to actually change, you know, accelerate learning for students. So there are students receiving interventions that, at that point that we reported that data, did not yet have plans in branching minds. And we will get there, but it's part of a learning curve. And we wanted to be reasonable about the expectation that we're putting on teachers.
I was trying to connect it to the goal, I think we set out on the plan about getting 100% of kids to have a plan.
Second language learners and students with IEPs are a piece of that population, but not all of that population. You know, so students that already consider students that are designated as EL, as having a support plan in place, students with IEPs have a support plan in place. They may have an additional intervention plan if they're meeting with a reading specialist or something along those lines, because we could have intersecting plans. Or it could be that a student has an IEP for math, but has an intervention in place for literacy. So some of that number does consist of those kids that may not have a plan because they have an EL plan or special education. But it is not all of that. That some of that is the change management and us getting to the point of getting good use of the tool.
And do you think it's still, it's reasonable or fair to have as a goal by the end of the five-year plan to have 100% of kids? Because I think that was our original.
A plan in the bottom quartile?
Do we have the resources and capacity to achieve that?
I think, so part of the reason we moved to the tool was to get to a tool that was more teacher-friendly, that would provide better sports and resources. I think that goal is still attainable while we are also still working on building in high-quality intervention tools for teachers to use. Because a plan is good, but it is only as effective as the teacher's ability to implement that and the resources, of course, they have to do that well. So I still think it's attainable. Moving to this tool was a good move for us because the other tool was going to be a hindrance in making that happen, but we had to kind of restart.
Thank you.
Stacy, just want to continue a question that Candace started around, so branching minds, those two of them. One is, so is branching minds, and I know kids, kids in JEH, you know, get IEPs, you know, if they transition from early intervention, you know, they'll change their IFSP into an IEP. Are JEH teachers utilizing, if children have IEPs, right? You know, are they, do they have access to the branching minds? And are they getting trained on?
So JEH was trained, is trained in branching minds. And Sharon has an MTSS team that's running on a very regular basis. And they're gathering and having conversations about their students and their students' performance and really trying to figure out interventions that need to be in place. And that's really regardless of the designation. They're very interested in taking a look at where kids are and accelerating their learning. So they have been trained, they are working with Donna. And Sharon has, you know, a nice structure in place focused on MTSS and providing support for students.
Great. And then what, and you mentioned how the previous tool was not very user-friendly. So what was the tool that we were using before?
The, I've repressed it.
I don't know what I'm talking about.
It was made by PCG, and it is not coming to me right now.
MTSS Explorer.
All right, thank you.
They did.
It was under EZIPs, so.
The other thing that underscore from your first question, Sharon Sprague, the head of JEH down here, is a really quite competent, data-savvy person. And so she's very, and she's very comfortable in teaching that to her colleagues. And so it's been really exciting to watch.
Yeah. And then again, you know, so then going back to the academic achievement report, I think that's one of the things we talked about. And the frustrating is that, again, we really want to try to find strategies that try to address that perpetual gap to continuity. And the earlier that we can identify strategies to really help kids, I think, is the best route, right? I mean, I think if you really want to try to make a dent in that, in that, I mean, the research is really clear. I mean, I mean, those first five years, those first few months that children are in schools, you know, again, are critical. So whatever we can do to apply whatever strategies from early childhood on, I mean, it's only going to benefit us as a district and students' outcomes ultimately.
That's right.
And then the strategy indicators scorecard? Anybody have any, is there a preface to that, or should we just go straight to questions?
Sort of looking at all of this together.
Yeah. So does anybody have any specific questions on the indicators?
You know, I do.
No, it's good.
Okay. So first I have a concern, and I understand why you recommended shifting the kindergarten readiness and percentage of students that have pre-K experience out of family and community engagement. I never really thought that it should be there anyway. But I do believe it's something that we have to continue to look up and at. And it is the level of importance of an indicator. You know, by definition, those are really important indicators. I think they should be under teaching, you know, quality, high-quality teaching and learning. I have a concern about removing them from our scorecard. Because I know it says in here it's reported on the accountability report, but so are, you know, so are our MAP scores. But that, you know, those are still indicators. And especially, I mean, the MAP scores are lagging indicators, right? These are leading indicators. And that was kind of the original premise of the scorecard, was to look at leading indicators and for us to have a better, more holistic look at what are some of the leading indicators that might then lead to outcome data that, you know, again, we aren't seeing moving in the way that we want.
I would just have to agree with Candace in that we don't really have anything in terms of making our community aware of what's going to be expected once they come in. And the only way that we can do that is to have some sort of outreach and/or, you know, something on our website, what's going to be expected or an explanation of the ISO. So I'm also concerned, possibly not the percentage of kindergartners, but maybe we could change that to parents aware of what's expected or what educating parents of what kindergarten readiness means.
And then, you know, I just want, I want to, let me interject real quick. So then Cradle to Career worked alongside District 65 and all the early childhood providers here to create the Strong Start to Kindergarten document that's supposed to be provided to parents. So, you know, maybe putting out a measure, like even, was it distributed out? I know it just, I think, released just recently, I think it was like about a month ago, which is a little bit late in the year, right? But, you know, I think the issue was trying to get it translated and making sure that we had it for everyone. Yeah, just before winter break, right? But, you know, so then I think that piece that you're talking about, yeah, it's very critical. How do we ensure that not only our teachers know what the expectations are? And the beauty of what's going to happen, I think we're having an upcoming, you know, kindergarten and I think second or third annual, you know, coming, or a gathering of early childhood program folks with our kindergarten teachers, which is great. And then they know, they can communicate what the expectations are, what the experiences were for the kiddos. And then that Strong Start for Kindergarten document, you know, is another piece that I get. For me, completes that triangle of communicating and informing all parties involved. I think it was more involved in student outcomes. So that, so I think, again, maybe, again, making sure that as part of that measure, and I agree, I mean, for me, you know, kindergarten readiness, you know, we, I'm not too sure about getting rid of it, but I do want to expand the way we measure, you know, what child success looks like. And which is why I asked last week, you know, what can we do to get some instrument to measure, you know, the holistic growth of children in early childhood programs, right? So.
So registered, and we'll talk about it. One, we're not getting rid of the percent increasing, the percent of kids with kindergarten experience. We were suggesting having it one place and not both places. So I hear the, I hear the pushback. And then the piece about parents aware, I get that. We, we're going to have to think about what the measure is and how to measure it, and then if we have the capacity to measure it. And I don't want to overpromise right now, but it's a worthwhile thing for us to think about.
Well, I think it's specifically of the parents that we already have here. So I know through Head Start, they have their parental engagement piece that's federally mandated. And, you know, there's pieces to that that doesn't, that don't necessarily overlap with anything, any data that we record here. But we have a captive audience. We know who those parents are, we know where their kids are going to go. Do those parents know what kindergarten readiness means for the 200 families that we already have here?
It would be helpful to maybe see if Evanston Cradle to Career is already trying to figure out a way to track that. They may be, I don't know.
They could be, but we are, I mean, we already have people here. We already have families here. And I know that parental engagement is part, and I know that they have certain topics that are covered. And maybe that is combined with some of the federally mandated parental engagement pieces because I don't recall that being one of them. But if we already have them here, is that something that we could introduce as our own measure that could potentially, you know, meet the federally guided parental engagement piece that's currently not in there? But that would help us ensure that our families know what kindergarten readiness means because I don't think that they currently do.
So we will bring it up, and again, I don't know exactly how we would measure it. So that's the conundrum that I have right now, but we can follow.
Participation? I think we can measure, yeah, participation. No, I'm just.
I think we can do it. I think there's lots of ways of doing it. The question is how to measure it, what the tool is, who gathers the data and who analyzes it? And that one, I don't have on my sleeve right now. So that's, so if you're hearing hesitation, it's really how to execute what you're suggesting.
I also think that's a great career to discussion, too. Just like the kindergarten, like having that data and us both being bought into the goal of having understanding, right, within and across the community, and the readiness, if we aren't bought into the measure that we know isn't as holistic as it ultimately is, but it is what we have, then we got to all be singing from the same hymnal and our respective responsibilities and accountability for those things. Because it's not, it's not just the district, right? And everybody knows that. But it's one way for us to have a common set of language.
Any other questions?
Love the other ones.
Okay. If there are no other questions, we will move on to our next discussion item, which is the TWEI update.
So, yeah, I am going to, the good news is, I had set this up to be, I didn't spend a ton of time on the slides, so we're going to walk through them and give you the details. But I, and while I'm assuming that questions will come from the read of the memo and whatever detail may have come out of that memo. So this evening, really, we just wanted to come and give you an update, particularly on the work that we're doing to advance the two-way immersion program with a focus on really three things. One, kind of looking forward to the need ultimately to do some strand relocation in order to eliminate single strands of the two-way immersion program at schools. Two, the potential to move into middle school because research really speaks about the fact that dual-language programming and two-way immersion has the most powerful impact for students if that education can continue into the middle school grades. And that will also create a tighter connection to ETHS programming. And three, to give you a sense of the work that's happening in Amy's department as far as ongoing program improvement. You guys, and so I don't know who will tune in late night on this one, but the goal for the two-way immersion program, we have discussed this on multiple occasions with the work we did last year, but really is to focus on academic achievement for all students. Our two, our native English learners and our native Spanish, or native English speakers and native Spanish speakers attain high levels of bilingualism and biliteracy while also increasing cultural competence. And the acronyms are for folks that may be tuning in at some other point. But TWS, native Spanish speakers, TWE, native English speakers, and then TWX are students that have demonstrated language proficiency on access. They were native Spanish speakers. Now they're designated as TWX because they've demonstrated proficiency on access. We are discovering that I've become tongue-twisted after 10 o'clock. So first thing to touch on is the TWEI enrollment and strand review. There were, I think, three key pieces of information in the memo, thinking about enrollment. One, part of our motivation of doing the expansion of the two strands for two-way immersion last year is to get to greater language balance and language allocation. And what we saw in the information we looked at last year is we had balances anywhere from 80/20 to 40/60. What we see now with eight strands of TWEI at the kindergarten level was that district-wide, we're at 50/50. But when we go to the school sites, our language allocations and our language balance is still off in the system. So, you know, we are going to work with RAD through this kind of enrollment season and through our Tuesdays at TWEI, which start tomorrow, and a number of things to try to figure out how to get a better balance of language across our sites while working to honor trying to get locations as close to people's homes as we can. And so there's the kind of the tension that we have to reconcile in the district based on our locations and program. But that is what we're seeing. We're seeing that it seems like eight strands is the right number, but we've got work to do inside the system to balance those class sizes going forward. Review of primary enrollment versus homeschool attendance. This bar chart captures the fact that what we see in our system right now is that our white students are much more likely to attend their homeschool when they're in a two-way immersion program than our students of color. And what this most likely reflects is that our Spanish speakers, for many of them, this is their second language support. And so they are, in cases, traveling to get to that language support, whereas our white families tend to be our English language learners and I think tend to opt in more often when it is their homeschool. But what this, what we see here is a factor in us thinking ultimately about what our long-term sites should look like. We ideally want to be able to increase the amount of students that are native Spanish speakers to be in their homeschool. And it's a piece of information we need to pay attention to. The other thing that you saw in the memo was the review of the race and ethnicity data. At the system level, we don't see an increase of black students within our two-way immersion programs, but we do see a significant increase in the diversity of the classes over at Bessie Rhodes. So that speaks to the fact that that adjustment around the second and fifth ward, giving preference into Bessie Rhodes, has created an opportunity for greater diversity at that particular site. But growing diversity still remains a significant challenge and problem in the two-way immersion program because we have in too many cases single one or two black students or students of color in two-way, black students, in two-way immersion programs, that that becomes a very challenging kind of racial situation for those students to maintain their own identity as a black student while being in a classroom where they are really the only one to two people that are black and carry their own identity in a room with native Spanish speakers and generally white students. So when I take a look, as we dive into the thinking about where might strands need to land down the road, I think this was a very important chart for us to be paying attention to. And it is similar to something that we talked about a bit last year. But it highlights essentially where our native Spanish speakers actually live and where they actually attend school. And I failed to print the notes on this one. But what we can see is that our native Spanish speakers do predominantly live in the Oakton zone, Dawes, and then Walker, actually, yeah, Washington, Oakton, and Dawes. Then when we take a look at busing, we notice that there's a lot of busing out of Walker. There's a lot of busing that we see with our Lincolnwood and Kingsley zone. But we really need to dig into that to determine whether those are students that are living in the fifth ward and actually being bused into Lincolnwood and Kingsley, which is most likely. So us understanding where those students are actually physically living in the homeschool zones to ultimately determine what makes the most sense for our long-term TWEI locations is critically important. And so taking this data and really thinking that through. data and really thinking that through, in addition to engaging in community, we've already done some engagement with our principals on this one to really solicit their input for TWE programs, but using data, a combination of data and engagement to make a long-term plan for these TWE strands with the goal of getting to basically two-strand programs throughout the district. So that's essentially that piece of information. The other thing that we wanted to share was just to walk through a single cohort review. And the reason I did this is that we did this is when we take a look at moving to essentially this current language allocation in our two-way immersion model, this group is a group that has gone all the way through the system, starting with this 90/10, with the 90/10 biliteracy model. So it was worth it to take a look at this group, just to take, to get a sense of their trend data. One of the things that we saw within this is, one, that we are seeing that this group is posting kind of expected gains that are consistent with our district averages for all students. And this is a group that is now in sixth grade. So that means that they are seeing that growth that's consistent, yet we still see a very large opportunity and achievement gap for our native Spanish speakers in comparison to our English speakers. And so where we really are focused is how do we get into, earlier into accelerating the learning so that achievement and opportunity gap can be diminished? We can see that those students are performing fairly well against the district line, but still on that overall college readiness benchmark, it's a significant gap. Amy, do you want to pick up with some of the next steps?
Sure, some next steps. We, we started the dual-language framework in last summer, and we continue to work it with, we continue to work with it throughout this year, and we hope to have an end product in the end of this school year. They are a group of teachers in TWE, across grade levels, across schools, with special education teacher, TWE, special education teachers, with district leaders also at the table. The second one, we, we, the next steps is to, in order to provide teachers and students with more supportive TWE experience, we're determining these long-term locations in order to make it single-strand schools and a double-strand school that Stacy mentioned earlier. The third thing we're working on is to expand the TWE program in the middle school. And we currently do have one course in the middle school, and it is for all former TWE students, and it's Spanish for Spanish speakers. And we've been working with that group of teachers and helping revise the units to include standards and to have a reverse language, Spanish language arts class as opposed to a foreign language class, because our TWE students come in with a depth of knowledge since kindergarten. And so we don't have to go through, you know, la mesa and la pizza you might have to in a foreign language class. So again, exploring other coursework to include in middle schools to make it a true TWE mano. The fourth thing is deepening our relationship with BPAC. I hope that, I know that some of you have, have been going to the BPAC meetings, and I'm very excited. We have new parental leadership, and they bring a lot of enthusiasm, and there's good representation of both EL and TWE in the leadership. And then, again, monitoring the enrollment patterns, as Stacy mentioned earlier, to, you know, working closely with RAD to ensure this 50/50 balance and continue working on racial diversity of all students and TWE.
And I think we will probably hold right there. Just a point of clarification on timing of things. We really want to do the continued analysis and engagement around the movement of TWE strands within the next 12 months to be able to have a plan teed up for essentially the, and I get my numbers off, but the 2021 school year. And middle school is that next step, so that research or learning would pick up once we've kind of determined this, where we are going to consolidate the TWE strands and begin to move forward there. And the very logical piece is that we felt like, well, I shouldn't say that, we really believed that we needed to focus on continuing to improve the quality of the program while we identify where we move the strands to, and then we can shift our energy into thinking about how to build out the middle school model in a systematic manner. And so first round of engagement around the locations of the TWE strands, then rolling into middle school. Questions?
I think we have one more slide.
Yeah, let's, over here.
The middle school, it's actually really exciting.
We, we agree. And we just want, you know, part of that work is going to be digging in and doing the necessary learning to do it well.
Well, I've heard noises, but.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think, we're really excited about it, too. And I know there's a lot of interest in that. And so that is very much in our, in our lens, and we want to be able to get there as we work through the TWE strand location.
I'm curious, what were the barriers this year to being able to monitor registration in order to balance our native Spanish-speaking and native English-speaking populations in classes while also prioritizing increasing the racial diversity? And with awareness of what those barriers were, what can we do this year in order to be able to monitor both of those things simultaneously?
So those are, I'm gonna kind of grapple with those two different questions. I think both are absolute priorities for us. On the first one about getting language allocation balance, we, we are partnered with the RAD team to try to identify best placements. I think at times what happens is that we would, a student will qualify, and then we will place that student, but a student, but then a family may decline that seat, if it's a seat that they, if it's a school that they decide they do not want to attempt. And so that is, that happens for you sometime, more, much more frequently with our English-speaking students. And then the tension I think that RAD grapples with is also if, before this year, I thought the Dawes numbers were surprising this year, but before this year, we had a very high percentage of native Spanish speakers at Dawes. And if that's their homeschool, we have to decide, does that mean that we're going to bus them to another school to get the language allocation balance, or should they get the preference to be at their homeschool? And so it is a complication of how do we get our native Spanish speakers as close to home as we can while getting a language balance, while also negotiating what I think we see partially in that bar graph, which is that our English-speaking population likes the program a great deal, but they like it best if it's in their homeschool. And if it's not in their homeschool, they may or may not take the seat. And so, and this is all happening particularly right before school starts at a pretty fast pace. And so sometimes the, you know, in that case, the numbers did not land the way we wanted them to. So trying to back the system up and really taking a look and partnering as we go through, we're hoping that we can be a little bit better at it, but it's going to take time to figure out. And we have strengthened the communications between the RAD department and the dual-language department, which is, which is helpful and productive. Kylie, do you want to add anything?
No, your answer is perfect and completely accurate. Thank you.
Cool. The second one around racial diversity is trickier. We, so, trying to think about a couple of different things. Right now, I think one of the things that was outlined by Peter is we've looked at this before. One, we are able to give preference to students in, within kind of the King Arts and Bessie Roads boundaries into Bessie Roads. And those are, those particular neighborhoods are much more populated by families of color, so that does create a benefit in the selection preference for those families. We also have the sibling preference in Roads, which created a benefit, because there is greater racial diversity at Bessie Roads as well in their existing, in the kind of the first or eighth grade population. So there are a couple of factors that I think contributed to the greater racial diversity selection within Bessie Roads. Outside of that particular kind of catchment zone, there are some challenges in the selection process. And that's that one of the factors that does go into how people get preference is the size of classes. And there are families that have, for instance, if I were to take Orington first grade kindergarten last year, class sizes were very large. So when that comes to, that a family may get preference out of Orington into a TWE seat prior to a school that has lower class sizes. And our lower class sizes tend to be at Oakton or Dawes. And so there is a selection preference that at times works against some of our families that are, live in the Oakton and Dawes area, who tend to be a higher percentage of families of color. And so that is something that we're grappling with and trying to figure out what's the best way to balance that out. We cannot select based on race. And so this was a first step to try to look at the King Arts and Bessie Roads attendance boundaries. And we're trying, we're thinking about other options and potential ways in which we can kind of balance off a selection preferencing system that is working against the diversity in that program right now.
I would agree with all of what Stacy said. And I would also add, you know, increasing awareness about the programs and the program offerings is a key component for increasing access. So I think that Stacy and Amy and their team have done a really phenomenal job of working thoughtfully to really get the word out there to a lot of different families and communities about these programs, so that we can also increase the pool of applicants, because it is a program that families have to apply for and seek. So we need to increase the pool of applicants as well as balancing the selection of people who have applied. So it's both of those. It's, it's utilizing the supply effectively, but also increasing the demand.
And we are running the Tuesdays at TWE, right, starting tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM.
In the morning.
Or 8:30-ish. So, but I think that's the first one. And so we're doing that and trying to do some other outreach, too. But this, this year round, I think we're much more focused particularly on the schools where we haven't seen as much enrollment. And so we, we have slightly smaller class sizes, so we want to address that.
The other question that I have, which may ultimately end up getting answered with the later discussion about how we will consider consolidating strands, is when we have, right, we have some enrollment metrics that are not ideal for the best practice delivery of immersion program, what can, what options are we considering to provide adjustment to that, that's not simply waiting until the next cohort starts?
Right.
School. So for folks who may feel racially isolated, or in classrooms where native language isn't balanced?
Right.
Are we going to, do we have any options to provide any correction for those children in those classrooms? Otherwise, they're, they have several years in that situation without an option.
Yep. So in regard, so one thing that schools do do structurally and schedule-wise is that several of our TWE schools remix the kids during their specials windows so that they have an opportunity to be able to connect with students outside of their individual section. And certainly from a sense of racial isolation, that is, that is a helpful strategy. It's also a helpful strategy for helping kids connect and feel to be part of a broader school community. In regards to the language allocation piece, it is something that teachers consider. Each classroom that kind of enters their space on an annual basis has a different characteristic to it. And so understanding the strengths that kids bring in regards to the language, as well as social emotional learning and all of those different things, becomes kind of a factor in the way they think about and try to be responsive to the classrooms that are in front of them. But it is, and it is a good question that, you know, and I accept that push and challenge, that we should do a little bit more digging and thinking about other ways to try to address those challenges.
And I think you're spot on, that in the longer term, as we get to the question about consolidating strands, we'll be able to more robustly address the issues.
There is, there's some opportunity there, but I also appreciate the not waiting challenge.
Right.
I would urge us, as we are thinking about the, I appreciate the timeline for thinking about the consolidation of strands, and I do think that is important work. And we, we saw from the Equity Report that we received a couple of years ago, that that was something that we needed to focus on. So I appreciate that timeline. I think it would be a mistake to look at strand consolidation in isolation from larger questions of enrollment and busing in the district. If, if the goal is to reduce the number of students of color who are bused to programs, I think we, I have to, we have to look at busing overall. We can't look at it just with respect to this program. So I hope that we do it in the broader context of looking at enrollment and boundaries district-wide.
And busing is a factor in this. It is also about the overall educational quality experience, and that can be argued for all of those questions and topics you've just raised. And I agree with you, and I'm also feeling that urgency of this fact that that Equity crosswalk was now a couple of years ago, and wanting to be able to do something. So I do hear you, and I'm hoping that we're able to kind of engage and move on a number of fronts.
And I will just push back that it's been since the 60s that families have been looking for a solution to the inequities of busing in the community. So I agree with you, there's urgency, but there's urgency around all of it. So I, I think it would, if we try to find just a solution to this, I think we're going to be missing an opportunity. Again, looking at a broader vision.
Very well taken. I appreciate that.
Just wanted to, again, I appreciate having seen, it's also part of the strategy, strategy report around high-quality learning teaching talks about assessing Spanish. I know we're doing, I think that's a pilot, a step assessment in Spanish.
Yes, it is.
So, so again, I think that's always been one of the critiques. And again, there was this incredible article, which I'll share with you later on during the week, around some big ideas in education from Education Week, and they talk about bilingualism and how, and dual language programs tend to benefit the white students. And, and part of it, the paradox is that, again, you know, that they were able to show and prove and build out to something like a, the, the, the bilingual, so you get it after high school, it's the bilingual certification that you get if you follow through on the program and the test board, which our ETHS offers. It's a lofty goal, and it's a great, great thing to strive for, but our bilingual students, our Spanish speakers don't. And, and part of that is privilege, part of it. So, so to be able to see an attempt here, to really try to value everybody's language development, and Spanish development in general, I think, is, is, is good. And it's something that I think families have complained about, Spanish, just Spanish communities have complained about in pre, you know, previous years. So, so I'm very glad to see that we're, we're kind of working towards that. And, and I think the, hoping that the framework kind of addresses that. And I'm very excited about the middle school, you know, again, I know we have to prioritize, and I agree with the, with the timeline and the logic around, you know, first, let's take care of strands, and then let's look at middle school. But I think as we, as we, one of my recommendations would be to, you know, work together with some of the ETHS teachers who teach Spanish and have an incredible program over there. And then have our middle school teachers kind of collaborate. So, you know, we, we have this, this, a, the pre-K and kindergarten teachers meeting, and what can we do to have a summit between our, our middle school teachers?
We do, there is an articulation meeting for our fifth grade, or excuse me, the eighth grade teachers going to high school and talking about the kids and helping see where the placement should be. And so that's already in place.
And then also, and thinking about articulation meetings between the elementary and the middle school.
Yep, we're doing that, too.
Awesome. Fabulous. Sounds great.
Can I just ask one question? I saw in here that the, the math assessment is given in Spanish to Spanish speakers. Is that true of the reading assessment as well?
No. The map, the, so the map assessment, so third through fifth grade, is, reading is given in English and math is given in Spanish. In our primary grades, in the K-3, where we're still doing the one-to-one literacy assessment, we do have an opportunity to assess them in Spanish using EDL, or in that case, of the step pilot, step in Spanish. So we have a one-to-one measure of both, the, essentially the reading skills in Spanish and English. But in that fourth and fifth grade, we rely only on math, which is measuring English.
Okay. So then what, so then the, the reading, the college and career readiness benchmarks that we're seeing are skewed, may, might look differently if we were giving the assessment.
that we're seeing are skewed, they might look differently if we were giving the assessment in Spanish then?
That, and that is correct. That is, it is given in English. We know at that point in the program, we're at a fifty-fifty language allocation, but we would expect kind of based on research that there'd be some lag. I would want to see over time more of an upward curve in the percentage of kids that are getting there. That would make me feel like we were making better progress.
And that question gets to something I mentioned last week at the, when they presented the Academic Achievement Report. Is that again, that's, that's one way to be able to expand the way we look at kiddos, right, that are English learners. And so, so again, we, we know that the children are learning two, two languages simultaneously. And, and that's a very, very, very hard thing to do. And it's incredible what these kids are accomplishing, but we don't honor it because we look at the MAP reading score by itself in English. And then again, we see, we see, we've seen the, the remarkable achievement when, when Spanish speakers in TWE programs take, take the math, math in Spanish. I mean, it's, it's incredible to see the difference. So, so what can we do to honor that, that, that progress that, that Spanish speaker and native language speak Spanish speakers are doing and that hard work in, in our school? So, you know.
We are trying to figure out, and it's an interesting balance. We are trying to figure out the right way to be able to assess some of that Spanish, ongoing Spanish growth and development while also kind of trying to keep a right balance around the inbound of assessment time. So it's in the larger conversation.
Anything else? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then finally, after our long-anticipated building safety update.
In the spirit of safety and brevity, I may keep this short, but I will prioritize some of the key points that are, I think are really important. Thank you for giving me the time this evening. In the packet you received this evening, I highlight a couple of key important things. Notably that our schools have launched well into planning for crisis management planning. I'm noticing some, let me make sure you, you didn't get it? Okay. I can. Do you have a board me pack in? I can.
I can look at a.
I'll, I'll keep talking and then we can put speed. But essentially what I highlight is that in our schools, all of our schools lead, we have a district safety management team and then we have school-based crisis teams. And each of these school-based crisis teams support the principal and essentially executing all our drills for the year, determining when those are, making sure that we're planning for them and going through. That includes a fire evacuation drill, there are three that are required by the state, bus drills, shelter in place, what we call now intruder lockdown or active shooter drill. All of our schools participate with law enforcement supervision. And so that's an important priority for all of our schools. And then we also, in our district, we've added what we call a reverse drill so that if students are on the playground, this is not a state mandated, mandated drill, but if students are on the playground or there's PE outside, how do you, are students prepared to enter the building quickly if there's something outside? So for example, it could be tornado watch, a drill, or there's, there's something in the community that we want to make sure the students are inside and away from potential harm. And so in our drills, most of our schools are well in their way to make sure that they meet the requirement from the state to be up to code. This year, last year, we successfully launched a redesign of our coded system. In the past, we had what we called Code Red. Last year when I presented, I talked about Code Red. I talked about Code White, Code Green. These have been, these no longer exist in our district. These were abandoned and instead we now use plain language. It's the fire drill. There's, there's danger in the community. We are moving to lock down our building. We're using a soft lockdown. So we're moving to where we're going to secure and teach. So we are using plain language in all our communication per the recommendation both from the police department and from the Alice Institute, which is in any emergency situation, you want to get away from using codes. They can be a source of great confusion. What code is it? What are we doing right now? And in, in any emergency situation, seconds count. And so the more we move to using plain language in our communication, what's the nature of the emergency? What are the specifics you need to know? What's the direction that needs to be delivered to everybody? And so in all of our, all our, in all our schools and every single classroom, they've received what we now call an ULT, but it is also in the board notes essentially what we call District Six Five Emergency Procedures that describe these various indicators of secure and teach, evacuation, medical emergency. Every classroom has those descriptors. So anybody entering a classroom, you may not be familiar with them when you enter the school, let's say as a parent or visitor, but you can look up on a wall and you can see what are the, the meaning of those designation. Some of the other accomplishments since last year, we also updated our crisis plans to be more reflective of the Alice training. So the Alice training, alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate asked us to really make sure that all of our crisis plans reflected this kind of language. And so since I was here last year at this time, all of our staff, majority, let me see, the majority of our staff have gone through the Alice training and the e-learning suite. We have a number of staff who were hired this year who have received access to the online e-learning suite. And then we'll need to make plans to work with the police department to give them a simulation experience where they can actually engage in the practical learning. But everybody's received access to the e-learning suite. And so this is the example that I was mentioning of the updated codes. So in the classroom, you have seen the Code Red, Code Green. And now we use this model, which is a one-pager that has all this information that supports the work that's happening in classrooms. Pending goals for this year include a couple of things. Number one, continuing to think about the way in which we wanted to add for our local sta, our staff, kind of more simulated drill experiences. So that may include so that, so thinking about additional opportunities for how do we add crisis team planning. Our district safety team is participating in working with Evanston Police Department. And so we actually have, this is no longer a pending goal, but on here I have here that the police department has led the fire department and our school district safety team in what we've called a functional exercise where we are actually giving them an opportunity, the police department and the fire department, an opportunity to coordinate about what would it look like if there was an active shooter situation in a school? The experience, we had it in December, on December first, was so rich of learning for the commanders, for us as a district safety team, for the fire department. How do you respond? What's the communication? We're not even talking about suppression of what needs to happen inside the building. We're talking about what, what is the response and how are they talking together? To get the commanders, I mean, one commander said at the end of what we call the hot wash debrief of the session, he said, this was the best learning he's had in thirty, twenty, thirty years of being on the force. To be able to experience this kind of situation where you're arriving at a school, you're thinking about what the nature of the school is, how do you get in the building? And that was one of the successes that we could own, which is that we last year provided all of our police department first responders with a FOB essentially where they can enter the building safely for, you know, with the right permissions into the building. When the ETHS situation, that FOB actually, the ETHS, the ETHS Northwestern situation where the police had a big ring of keys and they had to enter each door and that held up their timing. And so that was one of the lessons learned for us is how do you accelerate that? We, all of our schools have received new walkie-talkies. We did have some bumps in terms of usage, but overall, all of our schools have a much more new, efficient walkie-talkie system that's unified. And so they're setting up what we call channels where you can actually talk across schools and accelerate our ability to communicate with each other. Some other pending goals from seventeen that we've accomplished this year. We are in the process, oh, so this is the description, I'm sorry, I'm not following the order here. So one of the, one of the things that we learned from the, the functional exercise that I will highlight also is that all of our schools have a relocation site. So for example, Three Crowns is across the street from Lincolnwood. So in the event of an emergency, and they, they have been training for years, actually, Mr. Gonzalez is the head custodian, kept talking about this, that for years they've prepared to, to evacuate to Three Crowns. Well, the police in the process of this experience identified, so well, you may get there, but we're not going to allow you to reunify there. This would not be the place we would want parents to come pick up their students. It's too close to the site of the incident. So that's one of the things that these kinds of experiences are affording us is better preparation for these situations. So we've continued to develop our partnership with ETHS. So ETHS has a pretty robust team, district safe, school safety team that's prepared to help us. So if ever there's a situation where we have our relocation site or students are someplace where we need to then reunify with our families, we would send them to ETHS. And we would set up and we're working on developing a plan to make sure that we're prepared to support that. Some other pending goals for this year that I wanted to highlight, we are in the final stages of developing e-learning videos for our staff, which are focused on our emergency plans. So Dr. Goran will be our last actor in those videos to help us prepare for, for really, and it's, it's an e-learning video. In other words, so here's our crisis plan, it's rooted in our crisis plan and it gives teachers an opportunity to test their learning in relation to those things. I would also add that we are in the process of our family emergency handbook. So that's an important goal that we have not yet, I've not been able to move on fast enough to deliver, which is to provide our families more information. Now, given the nature of the situations we've been having more and more, we're, we're working on accelerating our response plan. Melissa Messenger, who's our director of communications, has developed a series of canned messages that essentially prepare her for quicker response time to get that information out there. You know, we have information that there's a, there's something happening at X school. We need you to stay still. We're looking into it, we'll get more information to you. So developing canned messages for all of our kind of potential situations so that we can get information to families as quickly as possible, just so they're like, we're aware, we're working on it, we will send you more information as, you know, something is needed. Or we need you to meet families over here because we've had a, a drill or there's been some kind of a fire shortage and so we're going to be asking you to pick up your kids at this location. We are developing, there's some additional communication that needs to go to staff about Alice. When we launched this year, there was some confusion because we chose to only drill the lockdown portion of the Alice model. The Alice model has a lot of different portions to it. So there was some confusion that emerged because people heard, oh, well, we're not doing anything in Alice. No, lockdown, the opportunity to hide if there's an intruder in the building is a part of an active shooter response. It's not the only response, but it is a part of that response. And so communicating, working to make sure that staff understand we are doing Alice, we are communicating principles, we're drilling with their staff. And so to continue to ensure that they all understand that we are using Alice, we drill for the lockdown portion, we will continue to drill with the staff and provide staff, we are planning, part of the e-learning opportunity is to provide staff at their own timing, opportunities to be able to respond and to learn what's required. And just to remind you, this is a little bit of the acronyms. And then, yeah. So those were my updates. Any questions for me? And I apologize again.
I just had two more things. The, the functional activity which the crisis team participated in that we did on a Saturday morning, as Andalib says, was really, was, was really important for us to go through the scenario. And it was real time. I mean, it was real time with checking in, getting messages, trying to address communication issues. And so we learned a lot and the first responders want to do another one and they want to, they want us to keep us on, on our toes. And that, the second piece is, Andalib has done fantastic work on this and a group of us have been closely related to our first responders. So Chief Scott at the fire department and his colleagues, Chief Cook, the new police department chief. We just had a close to a two-hour meeting with him the other day to really talk about the wide range of things that we're concerned about, that they're concerned about. We hooked up our phones so that we have a direct line to both chiefs so that if we, if there's something going on in the community, we can actually text and see what's going on. And so we've maintained those relationships as well, which is really important in, in the case of a crisis.
Our next functional exercise will be March second. It'll be a four-hour functional exercise. The first one was always, was an hour. This one will be two hours of what happens from the moment there's a simulated active shooter in a school all the way through what do you do at hour two? The fire department wanted to be able to learn better about how do you respond to, how do you determine different types of casualties? So is it a broken arm? Is it a gunshot wound? So different, so there'll be actors who will be dressed up with different types of wounds to provide the fire department, the emergency services, an opportunity to discern what's happening. So the Brian Scott, Chief Scott is very committed to making sure that his team is also prepared. So that'll be the next phase, really this two-hour sequence with real, full, much more intensive engagement. And then in the summer, moving to a full day really functional exercise where we will work with local hospitals to prepare. And ultimately, we hope to never use any of this, ever. But what, you know, the most important thing is really the timing and the seconds. Everything we know about any kinds of emergency is really your ability to communicate and be prepared to respond, no matter what the situation is. And so it's not, I would say that it's the likelihood of active shooter versus other emergencies. What it does is it helps our fire, our first responders start to learn to talk to each other. It could be a fire, it could be any other emergency. This is transferable, these are transferable skills and learnings that they're getting from this experience.
And one of the big takeaways during the functional exercises in December was we learned how to both use our emergency texting system in a way so that we could communicate fast. And then also just on phone calls back and forth, when you and I were going back and forth, we had to, one of us had to pause, you know, basically like you see in TV, you know, say blah, 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 over so that we wouldn't talk past each other because we were getting a lot of information from multiple sources. So it was a, it was a really important exercise for us to get the experience in as much real time as we can have, not when it doesn't happen, but in case it does, we'll be ready.
Can I ask how we are practicing or managing communication with Skokie's Fire Department and Police Department?
So Walker, the principals of both of those schools have met with their SROs essentially on a regular basis to make sure that they are connected to the school plans so that they, they receive the school plans for the year. They're committed to making sure that there's regular review. When we do the, for example, the drills, the state law enforcement drills, they are participating as well in monitoring those. So they're the ones who come out, observe them, they walk the school at both locations. We have not, they are not, they have not been engaged in the functional exercises, but that's actually a, a good point to see what they're interested in.
We are on the emergency communication channel through our phones, a texting channel that comes out of the police department in Skokie. So, and I get them all the time. So even if there are incidences on the streets, things that police are doing, they'll, they'll notify us. And, you know, on the corner of Crawford and Dempster, there's a, you know, XYZ. So we'll know that that's going on.
They'd be great to reach out to because Skokie Police and Fire in Niles Township actually host the statewide functional exercises for emergency personnel. And they blow ups and stuff at Niles West every year and drill those things and train everybody else. So they have a bit of expertise that they might lend to it as well.
And I was just wondering about communications within the building. So, and whether, what your experience was with the functional exercises? So, you know, if electric goes down, internet goes down, do we, do we have internal communications that work between the office and every classroom? Because I know there've been, parents have talked about, not clear on whether that actually exists. I don't know what the communications protocol is, but are we dependent on those systems being up and ready?
So intercom, our intercom system does rely So intercom, our intercom system does rely on, I have to confirm that, um, that our intercom system. I don't know if there's a backup generator that would keep the communication running. I'm not quite sure of that. Um, so that, that is definitely a part of it. That's significantly also why in the Alice model, teachers would, are really using all their senses to identify what, where the risk is, what the threat is, um, in a situation like that. And the, the way in which the drill, the functional exercise is being activated, we're not at this point testing that system out. Um, this is really the police department arriving saying, we have no idea, we're going into this arc. What do we do, um, with, with limited information, how to get to what we know, right? So the drill, for example, what they're drilling is they're testing out. But there is no reason why we shouldn't and identify testing to see, and I'm actually meeting with the district safety team tomorrow. And that's one of the questions I can find out is what is our backup system? Um, one of the, for communication, if the electricity goes out and we can't, let's say, do an all call. Um, if it's a, if we're talking about an active shooter situation, um, our staff have been directed through the Alice to really start to pay attention to what's the information you're receiving? What do you hear? Um, so often we don't pay attention to those sounds. Um, one of our upgrades that we've talked about recently is that our intercom systems are unique to each school. There is no way that you could, let's say, call into all schools from a central command location to say, you know, we've heard this news, you know, we can't get ahold of your principal, that, you know, any of these things. We need to give you some information, emergency information. So there's no current system that, it's probably about a hundred and forty thousand dollars to install something like that. Um, and that, I did recently actually get a bid to see what it would cost us because I am interested in how do you communicate to schools remotely if we needed to.
Yeah, that's just important to keep exploring and what methods of communication are we relying on.
We, we procure the services of Crisiscope and Crisiscope is an app that schools can put on their phones, people can put on their phones. And schools could put on their laptops, which would be useful to sending messages like that, so. Um, but again, that would rely on teachers' personal cellphone use. I'm trying to find ways that don't rely on personal cellphones.
Just an observation during the last, um, school closing, I noticed that you could opt out to the messages. And I'm curious if, is it like a total opt-out to any sort of emergency messages?
I don't recall.
It gives you the option at the end of the message to opt out of, out of any future messages. And I'm just curious if, if somebody decides to opt out of those messages, does that mean that they would not get like an emergency response?
They may still get, that may have been focused on text messages versus.
The phone calls.
Is it for phone calls?
Yeah, it was on the phone calls.
Oh, we gotta go check. Yeah, the, the laws around, um, what's it called? Essentially solicitation of information have become extreme, are extreme, huh? Are extremely stringent. Yeah, robocalls are extremely stringent. And I think that includes having even those kinds of situations always to be able to give like an opt-out feature. That's what I recall from a couple of years ago. So Melissa's not here, but I can check with her. But I know that you have to, for example, give that information. Now, we would be faced with other means of getting communication out. So we use Twitter, we may, we would post on the website, we would post information through email. Those things I think are still in regular channels. But I think for phone messaging and texting, I think the, the, the rules have become extremely tight around, everybody must have the opportunity to opt out. You can't.
If that's the case, that folks have to be given the option, and we know that it would mean that they have opted out of emergency notifications. I think that hopefully we could provide that information, that like you have the right to opt out of this. However, that would include opting out of emergency communication in the case that it was necessary, so that folks are aware.
Right, Anya and I were at an event this weekend and one of the things that, uh, parents brought up is just the, the ability to opt into what type of information we, they get from the school district. And right now, we don't have, like, you know, get an update on like Twitter, get an update on whatever, you know, like, um, arts. And right now, we don't have that option, but I know like through the city, you can opt in to a certain type of communication. Um, and then I'm also curious with the recent, um, internet, um, you know, outage. I'm assuming that most of the stuff, that information that we pull from to do like a, an automatic text or phone call is dependent on internet. So just again, what would the, the backup be when we do have an internet outage? Um, where would we pull that information? Does the, does the police department have access to other information should, should that ever happen?
But most of the services are cloud-based and if you can pop up a hotspot on your cell phone.
That's right.
I just popped up a hotspot on my cell phone and then I can get back and send the message to them. But I imagine.
Exactly. So that is what Melissa, well, so that's what Melissa used that day. She sent out an email. So we, many of our services, many of our phones have hotspots that are part of them as far as the district resources. So for emergency purposes, we are prepared for that. Now, our data system, we have dedicated hotspots. So if we are to relocate to the high school, we're not, let's say their wifi system's not working, we're going to have our own hotspots ready to use that. And then our schools would all come with their own alpha lists, so paper. So every school should have, um, part of their daily routine, weekly routine is to make sure that they're keeping their paper alpha lists current. And so, you know, if, if they showed up with, we, you know, for some reason, our computers were fried because a bug took over and everything. I expect all schools would show up with alpha lists printed out, ready to go, so. And then we just go to old paper and, old, old paper and pencil models, so.
All right, well, thank you very much for, uh, that update. We've been waiting for that one. Um, it's, it's incredibly important work and, and I am glad that we are doing it all. But I always feel like I need to, you know, note that it's sad to me that this burden falls on our educators, um, rather than addressing some of the root issues around gun violence. Um, and so thank you to all of our educators and staff at schools who are doing this work to make sure that our kids are safe in these types of situations. All right, with that, um, we are adjourned at ten fifty. Thank you, everyone.